... ten faculty members from around campus. I believe we had a couple of staff folks as well. And we met periodically through the course of the fall 2012 semester, carried on a lot of electronic conversations via a Wiki, did a lot of sort of independent and group research, and arrived at a prospectus that was presented to Dr. Schaefer and Dr. Fierro in February of last year. As you all know, February is a busy time, budget process is underway, and of course, last February, the college was tasked with cutting the budget at Governor Mead's direction. So to actually begin conversation administratively about starting a new initiative was not, it wasn't real good timing. So the prospectus was presented to Dr. Schaefer and Dr. Fierro, at which point they were quite pleased with our work, endorsed our work, but essentially said, "Thank you, and we'll get back to you." And then fast forward, if you would, to late May, early June of this year, Melissa had a conversation with Dr. Schaefer in which they both sort of arrived at the reality that we had ten new faculty members joining the college in August of 2013, which really meant we had a golden opportunity to really look at the development of our faculty and what we do with our faculty to welcome them, not only to teaching, but to teaching in particular at LCCC, and sort of all of the things that they need to learn real quickly to be successful here. And so Melissa and I spent our summer, much of our summer, sort of attached at the hip and working with, trying to develop not only ideas for the center based on that prospectus, but a proposal for the innovation funds that was, at that point, had been endorsed by you folks as part of the operating budget. We proposed a project. It went through the review, many iterations before it actually got to College Council. College Council supported it. It then went to the President's Cabinet, and as you know clearly, the financial support was there. So that's sort of a very condensed version of the history of where we have gotten to to date. Melissa and I co-chair the center. What that means is we're sort of, the energy behind all of the steps the center takes, we have a, I don't want to say staff, because we don't have a staff, but we have representatives from all of the schools here on the college. They serve as instructional consultants, work with us to plan our initiatives. They're actually going to be the energy behind the training sessions that we do and make available to all of the community campus, or the college community. So we have one in math and science, BATS has a representative. We actually have a representative from arts and humanities, I'm sorry, from math and science, who actually works at the ACC campus, and so we're getting a little bit of a double dip there, and we have a presence on that campus as well. So I'll let Melissa talk a little bit about the other initiatives we have going.
Yeah. So we started out, our conversation started with Dr. Schaefer, with, "Yeah, we need to help these brand-new faculty coming in." And then it snowballed into develop a syllabus, and then, "Oh, we should do some continuing professional development." And we said, "Okay." And then, "Well, you should support adjuncts." And we said, "Yes, absolutely, we should support adjuncts because, well, we all know they don't get a lot of support." And then Dr. Fierro said, "Well, do you think assessment fits under the Center for Teaching and Learning?" And we said, "Well, yeah, we can see that leap." So those are our four initiatives that we have for this year, and it obviously is keeping us hopping. So a couple of things that we have been able to accomplish thus far is, we assisted with the adjunct orientation in August, and went okay, but we have some plans to make it more robust and hopefully make the orientation something that focuses more on teaching and learning, which is a challenge that, we just don't offer that as much to our adjuncts as we would like to. The new faculty, we got off to a pretty good start with the faculty, the brand-new full-time faculty that we have, and we had a couple of meetings with them during the first week. We had a picnic. It was a potluck picnic out at Lyons Park. Totally drew a blank there. And everyone was really, really appreciative of that. It was a great opportunity for us to get off-campus, to get to meet our new faculty's families and children, which is always nice to get another lens on that person that we've just brought into the LCCC community. We've had a few sessions with our new faculty, and we are asking them to read several texts on teaching and learning, which are detailed in the handout that we gave you, and we've seen really great results and lots of good comments about, "Wow, you know, I tried this from the joy of teaching, and, oh, I hadn't thought about this, but now I'm going to do this." So it was really, it's really helpful. We have eight workshops planned by, being offered by our instructional consultants. Rob Van Cleve is one of them, and he actually did the first set of workshops this week, and faculty came, and we were excited. And so as we build momentum, we expect that they will, more and more faculty will come. We are intending to record all of the workshops and offer them up in links in our Desire to Learn shell that we have for the Center for Teaching and Learning, so that those faculty that are unable to attend for whatever reason, will still have access to those learning opportunities as well. And assessment, we are just continuing the work that was started last year with reviewing the master course outlines of record, as well as working on the rubrics for institutional competencies. So I guess that's what we've been up to. And so we'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Don?
You identify on your new faculty, first-year, second-year, and third-year. What's the breakdown? Do you have a breakdown as to how many in each of those years?
Yes, yes. So our brand-new first-year faculty that just joined us in August, we have ten. Our second-year faculty cohort is six, and our third-year faculty group is eight. So our third-year faculty are the group that are preparing to submit their portfolios for continuing contract.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Kevin?
When I looked through the document that you had provided online, what I noticed in there is that almost everything that you're planning for looks like it's engaged in pedagogy and teaching methods and things like that. But I can't believe that there wouldn't be quite a lot of demand on campus for professional development in particular areas. So faculty could be called upon to teach classes in some current topic or something like that, to make people more informed and aware of current topics in business, in economics, in mathematics, and all kinds of things. So what plans do you have for sort of, you know, encouraging that sort of thing?
Thank you, Trustee Keltie, for the question. We actually today sent to all of our instructional consultants a draft workshop or seminar information form. So our intention is to make that available to all faculty. We actually have had a couple faculty members come forward and say, "I could do a session on X." And so we will provide the logistical support and do the recording and make that available to all faculty. So once we as a group get that form hammered out, it's going to go right out to all faculty to solicit those varied topics.
So when you talk about consultants, you're talking about faculty and maybe some, possibly administrators and possibly staff?
So when I say instructional consultants, that's actually a role that we've built into the four, that's the terminology we use for the role the four school representatives serve. So Rob Van Cleve, for example, is the instructional consultant for the School of BATS. So there's a representative. We have a rotating schedule for when those positions will be competed amongst the faculty in that school, so that they're not positions in perpetuity, they're two- or three-year terms, and then they go up for competition.
You know, I guess I never realized that your division is now being called BATS. It's like a box of bats, is it?
[laughter]
You bring out the best in people. Jose, please.
Yes, I just want to add a couple of things. They have been very modest in their work that they have done. They have done actually a tremendous amount of work that the instructional consultants have to, they are faculty, all of them, and the intention of these in the long run is to become the center of professional, I'm sorry, the central professional development for all faculty and be strictly faculty-driven. I sit on it, but I'm only ex-official, other than that, actually carry Melissa running the whole show. One of the, from the administrative's end of the house, one of the great things that came up about this is that we were able to put all this together without using additional resources. It was very good that we got funded through the college initiative, but with this, we actually were able to return, I think, sixteen or seventeen credit hours back into the classroom on the, the whole setting of how assessment was working and instructional design was working. We had a large number of release time, so instructors out of the classroom. Right now, we were able to return about sixteen, I believe, even seventeen credit hours back into the classroom. So the equivalent of one time, one faculty member went back into the classroom, so that is one of the additional benefits taken out of this, and they've done a great job.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ed, you would have one.
Just for future perspective, since we're talking about development of faculty here, their professional enhancement, but I wonder if we couldn't reach out and incorporate those folks at the secondary level so that we can build a better communication with them and perhaps even at the university?
Sure. So part of our adjunct pool, our concurrent enrollment instructors, and we are, we, as part of our adjunct work, working with our adjuncts, that is certainly something that's on our radar. And interestingly, it's funny that you mentioned the university, because I happened to have a conversation with some professors last week about this very project, particularly the new faculty thing, and they said, "We wish you would do that. Come over here and do this with us here." And so I was really excited and interested, so I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility. I certainly, I would say that in our planning and what we talked about, we hadn't thought about working with the university so much, certainly with the secondary concurrent enrollment instructors. That was definitely something we've discussed, though.
At yesterday's training session that Rob conducted, we did have, one of the attendees was a, is a K-12 teacher, a secondary teacher, I'm sorry, over at South High, and she was here to get, to be able to take part in the session. So we saw that as a great, as a great step.
Any other questions?
I'd like to continue my numbers questions, if I may. Total number of full-time faculty?
At a college?
Yes.
One hundred and eighteen.
Full-time, only?
Yeah, not adjunct. That'll be the next question.
Well, adjunct, I think the last email that we sent out, correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, was three hundred and seventy-eight?
Yeah, the total of full-time and adjunct is three seventy-eight. And I want to say the full-time is in the eighties.
Actually, it's, I think it's about a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and eighteen or so.
Somewhere between eighty and a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and eighteen. Hundred and eighteen. I had heard a hundred and four or a hundred and eight at one time. And the next question is adjuncts more?
Well, I can figure that one out.
Oh, you're going to do the math?
Once I know it's a full-time. I have asked one thousand, by the way.
Two hundred and sixty, if you want to know the answer.
Thank you. I knew you'd have that brief.
Okay, any more questions? Thank you very much. It was a great presentation and very excellent information, and you'll come back again next year.
We'd be happy to, and thank you as well for dinner.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Campus Safety Academy, James Crosby. There he is.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Schaefer. I appreciate the invitation to join you for dinner tonight and also to have the opportunity to speak with you tonight about the Campus Safety Academy project. I've provided Vicki with a short summary of the program, which she has uploaded to you, and I also have copies for anybody in attendance who would like to have a copy of this particular document. Just to give you a little background on what we're trying to work with the, on this academy project, in the fall of 2011, LCCC had contracted with security risk management consultants to do a security assessment of the LCCC campus. And the assessment that they conducted was not only on the physical security, but they're also looking at the structure and the possible expansion of a more comprehensive campus safety department. So one of the things that they discussed was, you know, professional training and the fact that so many schools, both K through 12 as well as higher education, do not have sworn police personnel. As you know, every state has a police officer standards and training academy. We have an excellent one in Douglas for the state of Wyoming law enforcement officers. But we do not have professional training opportunities in an academy format for non-sworn personnel. And of the seven community colleges in the state of Wyoming, only two have sworn personnel. LCCC is one of the five that has non-sworn campus security. So in the past, the security training has been done more on the job training through the director and through the members of the department, the veteran members. So we proposed in February of 2013 in our strategic plan, which was presented to Dr. Schaefer and members of the cabinet, we proposed that we be allowed to take that security assessment and look at some of their concerns, and also to expand on their stated need that we had for developing a more comprehensive department. So part of that strategic plan that we submitted was for the formation of a campus safety academy. When we got permission to proceed with that project, we formulated an advisory committee, which we have had excellent response and participation from members of the community. We've had not only members of our faculty and staff here at the college, but we've also had members of the Cheyenne Police Department, the Laramie County Sheriff's Office, Wyoming Highway Patrol, and also the Emergency Management Agency for Laramie County and Cheyenne. So when we met together, we started drawing up a plan to formulate a curriculum for review, and then we have already, you'll see that I've put in bulleted format, the curriculum proposal. And we have discussed with various members of the advisory committee the possibility of who could be the best in areas of teaching those particular topics. So we're at the point now with the academy project where we're developing the curriculum, and we are working with the faculty and the people that we're contacted that are interested in presenting these courses. What we're going to do is, and the first academy session will be in June of 2014, and we're going to have an intensive, six-day, comprehensive residential program for non-sworn officers from elementary, secondary education, as well as higher education. We're going to advertise the program nationally, and we're working right now with Mary Ellen to develop the advertising for this program. We, we're going to actually have staff who, here on campus, for the people while they're in attendance, so that they'll have someone to, you know, work with them throughout their time on campus. We're also working with Cheyenne and Laramie County Prevention Management Organization and various civil or civic entities to help us with some of these programs. So I think in the sense of us being a community college, I think this is a great opportunity for us to work with these other agencies. We've had nothing but positive comments from the Chief of Police, the Sheriff, Rob Cleveland out at EMA. They're all very helpful. Wyoming Homeland Security is working with us on it. So it's, I think it's been an excellent opportunity for us as a department to network with these agencies, and we're getting a lot of free training in the interim time. Another thing that we're going to do is, in addition to the residential academy, we're working on developing workshops and training sessions that are going to be offered throughout the year. We're going to try to schedule one per month, and we're going to offer these to members of the campus community, faculty, staff, and students. And we're also going to, on certain sessions, they'll be advertised publicly for the public. And I think there, again, it's an excellent outreach for the community college to work with members of the public, to allow them to come to campus and participate in some of these programs. You're probably, I know you're already aware of the expansion we've made in our defibrillators here on campus. When I came here last fall, we had three on campus. We had one in each patrol unit, we had one that was permanently affixed in the PE building. With the support of the administration, we've expanded the AED program on campus from three to fifteen. So they're throughout campus now, and we've had a lot of good comments from Cheyenne Regional, different ones, medical profession about that. We're now working, as one of our projects and workshops outreach is that we're starting every other Friday, CPR, AED, basic first aid, bloodborne pathogens training. We're working that through Mary Ellen and also through Patrick Curry. So we've had our first session during the in-service, and we're working as our goal is that we would have 100% certification of faculty and staff on campus and as many students as we can get. We've got excellent support from Student Services, a lot of, and also Pete Cotelli, our athletic director, he's getting some of his students involved in the program. So these are some of the things that we've already started. We've also got advertised a safety awareness and self-defense program, which is going to be offered latter part of this month. And that's going to be open to not only our students here on campus, but it's also going to be advertised to the public. So we've already got some of the, we did an initial, a couple of ads in the newspaper, and we've already got some public participation in that. They've already signed up for it. So there, again, I think it's going to be a good opportunity to exercise some community policing. So the other things that we've been working on, we've of course been working for some time with the Emergency Management Agency on a revision of the college's emergency response plan. That plan has now been, we practiced it on a tabletop earlier, or I should say, the latter part of September, and I met with EMA this past week, and they have given us a very complimentary after-action report. I have copies for you, Dr. Schaefer, as well as members of Cabinet. And we, there were a few suggestions that Ty and I had made in terms of some of the changes in administrative titles and so forth, minor changes of that nature that we will incorporate, and then we'll submit that back to Cabinet. The reason I mention that in connection to the academy is because one of the things that, once we get that approved through the Cabinet and reviewed by legal, is that we're going to start meeting with individual departments and divisions to try to go ahead and instruct on that. And we want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with that plan. We're also going to be putting out additional maps on campus for all of our first response providers so that they can find, you know, our emergency shelters and so forth. So those are some of the things that we're currently working on, and I'll be happy to go over any of the bulleted items that I mentioned, but please feel free to ask any questions if you wish.
Trustee Keltie?
You know, I didn't, I didn't fully comprehend everything you were saying, but you were talking about having a large number of students and 100% certification of faculty, and I'm just wondering, what role in campus safety and emergency response do you see for students and faculty?
I think the more that we can get that are CPR certified and are familiar with the AEDs, which are throughout campus, if we were to have an event to where somebody needed medical attention, in the event my officers were not in proximity, or, you know, if a student happened to be in the area, they could certainly provide immediate assistance if they were trained and comfortable. Plus, I think it's very good to take home even for their families. So I think it's something that I believe will be well-received by the community.
Dr. Schaefer?
Just maybe as clarification, talk a little bit, if you will, James, about the model and the concept of community policing, or, you know, really public safety and what we're trying to do here, and how that fits into that model.
One of the things that we're trying to do is transition from the past model, in which the campus safety department was modeled more in the lines of an authoritarian enforcement unit that would enforce policy, protect assets of the college. We're trying to, a community policing model is basically going to be more service-oriented, it's going to stress interpersonal communications, it's going to be, we want to develop and expand our role on campus to where the students, faculty, and staff will view us as an integral part of the community, and therefore will be more approachable, people will be more readily to come forward to file complaints and make us aware of any concerns on campus. So we've had, that was one reason, I think, Dr. Schaefer, you, prior to my arrival, there was a change in uniforms from the traditional law enforcement style uniform to the one that's currently in use, because we're trying to change that image. The other thing is, is that in our recruiting, that's one of the things that we're doing in our search committees, is we're doing a really in-depth questioning about philosophies, and we want to make sure that anyone we hire puts the students first, and certainly the safety of faculty and staff, the entire campus community. But that is where we're working toward, and I think we've got a group of officers now who have bought into that philosophy, and we're getting good response from their interaction with the community.
Did you have something else?
Oh, yeah. You know, this is, this is quite a laundry list of things that you've got down here that you want to do, and so I'm just sort of wondering what the scope of this is. Are we looking at a large number of certificates, maybe, that we'd be offering here, or these are just?
What we're thinking about, Mr. Keltie, is initially what we're thinking about is in the six-day residential academy, these particular topics will be taught, and they're usually, we've factored out the time on each one, and some of them are two- or three-hour presentations, some are half a day. So we factored it out to where we'll fit within that six-day limit. We felt like that would be a little bit better for people who had to travel, if we could confine it to one week. We plan on having that one in June, but depending on the response we get, we can have as many of the academies as we can staff during the year. We selected June simply for the availability of the residential hall. But if we can get the participation and the interest that we think we will receive on this program, I think that we'll be able to expand it to multiple sessions.
As far as staffing your faculty for this program, I guess, is what I'm curious about. Looks like there's, some of this crosses over with programs in workforce development and community development here, and also, and also some of our academic programs. You've got report writing, you've got some certification on basic first aid, and let's see, what was one of the others in here? Fire safety and so forth. And so you're planning to use all of these campus resources?
Some of our faculty that are interested, for instance, Nick, over in our fire safety, he's interested in presenting, and we're going to send all of our officers through this program, but this is also, of course, designed for people from other agencies. So we are using, Mary Ellen is working, she and her staff are assisting on the advisory committee, so we are coordinating it with her, and she's assisting with the, some of the advertising and so forth. We're also involving some of our faculty, like Jody Webner will be instructing the portions on the legal aspects of it. Of course, the main thing, you know, we have to be concerned with is we're trying to make sure that it's for non-sworn personnel, because there's, as you well know, there's a lot of difference between our legal authority versus that of a sworn police officer. So even though we are using people like Donnie Heidug from our Justice Studies program to teach some of these courses, which he does in our regular curriculum, and some of the things that he presents to our RAs, he's going to be gearing this to non-sworn personnel. And so we're, it's a mix between our faculty and staff, those who are interested in participating. It's also, we're getting a lot of assistance from the local FBI field office, as well as Highway Patrol and Sheriff and Police Department. So I think we've got a good group of instructors, and what we're doing as a committee is we're going to meet with them individually and make sure that their certifications, their degrees, everything's appropriate. We're going to evaluate their curriculum proposals, and then once they are approved, then we'll move forward with the actual instruction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a question myself. These short courses in the evenings that are open to community members, is there a fee attached to those courses?
This particular course that Mary Ellen advertised on the upcoming style of safety awareness and self-defense, it was advertised through Susan Maxwell's program for a community fee. There will be no fee to the individual students or faculty-staff who want to attend. A lot of these courses that we're going to offer in the future are probably going to be cost-free to members of the community, because we would like to have that interaction with them, and we certainly don't want to exclude anybody due to, you know, their financial situation. So, but we will be offering initially, you were talking about certificates, Mr. Keltie, initially we'll be offering certificates of attendance, but once we, we're going to strive to eventually get to where we can, you know, at least get CEUs and things of that type so that people can participate and get that credit.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, James.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your coming. I appreciate your opportunity to speak to you.
That's great. Good presenters, Joe. College audit draft, Wayne? I'm going to limit you to two hours. No, I'm kidding. If we could have it in about a half hour with about ten or some minutes of questions, that would be great. Thank you.
Based on how interesting the previous two topics were, I don't think there'll be a lot of questions on this one. Would like to say that we do appreciate the opportunity to work with LCCC. And just to cover real basically, why do we have this audit, who requires it and so forth, the audit is required by the state of Wyoming for all seven community colleges. In addition, because of the amount of federal expenditures that the college has, it's also required by the federal government, and the federal government requires not only a financial statement audit, but an audit made in accordance with government auditing standards, as well as an audit of the federal awards, and so, under circular A133 from the OMB. So there's actually three- So, there's actually three levels of audit that we do because of the federal requirement. This last, our audit requirements are actually established by the Auditing Standards Board of the American Institute of CPAs, the General, excuse me, the Government Accountability Office, the GAO, as well as the Office of Management and Budget. This last year, the Auditing Standards Board made significant changes to auditing requirements, which they called the Clarification Standards, which I don't know if they really clarified anything, but they did require a lot more documentation and inquiry by the auditors in terms of looking at the approach we take, making sure that we are looking at risk areas. And I'll talk about some things we've done to try to enhance the audit process, make it more robust. In addition, you'll notice when we get to the auditor's report, that the report is a little bit different because of these standards as well. There were some things that were put in place to try to make that audit opinion and audit report more understandable. Also, as an audit firm, we're subject to peer review every three years. This is the year, so we get audited. And actually, that's occurring in two weeks. And a firm from North Dakota that's part of our affiliation will be performing that audit. They have three people who'll be coming here for three days, as well as some people in their office looking at specific engagements that require specialized knowledge. So, that's just to let you know that we go through a process too, in terms of quality control by an outside party, to make sure that we are doing the things that we're required to do. We also send staff to both government audit quality center training, as well as student financial aid training, so that we're up to, up to date on the changes that are occurring in those areas because of the complexity. I also met during the early stages of the audit with three members of the Board of Trustees. This provided two benefits. The first is an opportunity for them to express to us concerns they might have, areas that they feel that we should take a look at, as well as an opportunity for us to provide them with some of the knowledge that we should be passing on to them. And this time, we talked particularly about some of the high-level internal control aspects, starting with how the Board of Trustees sets the tone at the top, which we call the control environment, in terms of expectations for the whole campus community, in terms of what should be happening, in terms of the integrity of, for us as auditors, the integrity with the financial reporting process, as well as the programs that are being administered that involve federal and state funds, and some of those other areas. At this point, just to hit some of the high points in the audit draft, the first thing I'll point out is that Pages one and two is the Independent Auditor's Report. This is a little bit different from the past. The first thing that we are required to do now is to put in the subheadings in bolded letters that clearly identify what the, what financial statements we're reporting on, then what management's responsibilities are related to the financial statements, and then three paragraphs on the auditor's responsibility. Then our opinion is clearly identified. And then, and this report's about twice as long as it was before, then other matters that includes our responsibilities with the required supplementary information and other information that's included with the audited financial statements. And then that paragraph related to other reporting that we're doing in accordance with government auditing standards, which is a layer beyond just the normal auditing standards. So, the audit opinion is what we call a clean or unqualified opinion, which is that, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented in material respects. The Management Discussion Analysis provides an analysis prepared by management of the college to explain significant changes or significant items that are included in the financial statements. So, it's very detailed. I think it does a very good job. And so, I won't be going through that right now, because I don't want to take away from my 30 minutes. But really, there's a lot of consistency with the college. There are some areas that are down. The one thing that is down is the federal award money, because the college, and this is true for all of my colleges that I've been working on this year, they all saw a drop in their federal funds because the stimulus money finished up in 2012. And so, for your college, that was $1.8 million drop in federal awards this year compared to what you'd had in the past. Moving on to page 46, this is our audit report on the audit in accordance with government auditing standards. And under government auditing standards, in addition to auditing the financial statements, we look at two other areas. One is the internal controls over financial reporting. And the other is compliance with laws and regulations that could have a material effect on the financial statements. And so, in this area, we did not have any findings related to internal control over financial statements. At this point, there is one item that we are still working on that relates to compliance with laws and regulations. One of your banks, we're, we're working with them. The banks are required to maintain pledged securities for your deposits at that bank. They basically have to take some of their, banks hold investment securities and usually government agencies and other things, but they're required to actually take those, a certain amount of securities and say, "We're pledging these against these government entities' deposits that they have with us in their checking accounts, savings accounts, and so forth." That's state law. And actually, it's not just in this state. Pretty much every state requires that. We're having a hard time getting this bank to respond to our request to see the amount of the pledged securities. And so, just yesterday, we got a fax from them, and for pledged securities, it said, "See attached," and there was no attachment. So, we still don't know how much they have pledged. If they did not have enough pledge, then it's considered that they did not meet that obligation. We have to report that. Now, you're not out any money, because that was back in Ju, at June 30th. However, they still have, under contract with the college, they're required to have pledged securities there. It's actually a combination of pledged securities and FDIC insurance. Basically, the state wants to make sure that the state entities, including political subdivisions like colleges, county cities, are protected in case a bank were to go under. And then all of a sudden, they say, "Well, we can't pay you the $800,000 that's in your account, because we went under." And although we did have a spate of bank failures that occurred because of the meltdown that started in 2008, for the most part, the FDIC and other government entities were able to cover depositors, but nevertheless, it is a state law. The bank is required to do that. So, that's the one thing, and tomorrow, we're calling the bank again, saying, "We need to see your listing and dollar amount of pledged securities." We'll compare that with the balance that was in that bank on June 30th, and if they're under-secured, then we'll let you know. Now, again, you're not out any money, because that was back two and a half months ago. But nevertheless, the bank needs to get their act together and have the processes and controls in place to make sure they don't let that happen again. So, anyway, I wish we were further along in that process, but unfortunately, we're working with the bank to get that information. But we're tenacious as auditors, and we're not very popular, so we just will hang in there until we get our answer. But that's the only audit procedure that we currently have that's open. Everything else, we've done all the auditing work. It's been through all our reviews, except for the final report review was just finished today. And we'll just, that's, we have a partner who's not involved in the job that just takes kind of a cold review of it. And nothing significant's come out of that. And then, the only other thing we'll need, well, we'll get to this next part. The next thing we do is, is we test major programs, and there's a process that the federal government identifies for us through OMB Circular A133 for us to determine which major programs we need to look at, which federal programs. We looked at student financial aid and ETSS, and we had no findings with ETSS. We do have findings in the financial aid area. The first finding that we have actually relates to the schedule of federal expenditures. The person who had been doing that schedule retired. A new person's doing it now. There were some things that were missed in that schedule. The schedule you have is correct. The issue there is just that as the auditors, we found some things that weren't correct. So, we are required actually by the OMB that if we have issues with the scheduled federal expenditures that we find incorrect as auditors, we still need to report that. Since then, in talking to Harry, they've got a process in place for next year. He's going to review some things to make sure that, it's part of a training process, I think, with the transition to a new person. And sometimes that's what happens, is when you have somebody that's done something for several years, and then they retire or go to another position, a new person comes in. A lot of times, that first year, there's a transition, some additional training. There wasn't anything intentional. It didn't affect the financial statement numbers, except for classification a little bit. But it's all been corrected, but again, we have to report it, but there's a process in place to correct it. The second thing that came up has to do with return of Title IV funds, which I know you're familiar with, because the consulting group came in, and they were going through this. We had reported this as a finding in the previous year. And the difference this year, though, is in the previous year, we found errors and reported that we found errors. This year, the internal review found all the errors, but because of the timing of when the internal review occurred, the under-over payments were not corrected within the timeframe that the federal government requires that they be corrected. So, our finding is not based on the errors not being detected. It's that the correction of those errors wasn't done within the appropriate timeframe. And that's based on the timing of when the internal review occurred. So, that's what the finding relates to, and there are processes that have been put in place now to where they'll be addressing that and doing their testing within the appropriate timeframe, so that not only can they find the errors, but they can get the refunds and other corrections made within the required timeframe. And that's finding two. Out of the 40 students that we tested, we found five where there were corrections that were found as part of this internal review, and as part of that, then, you know, obviously, the timing wasn't right. Five out of 40, some people might say that's not too bad, other people might say it's pretty bad. The bottom line is that we can't say it's isolated. If it's five out of 40, if it was one out of 40 as auditors, we could look to see if it was just an isolated instance, because we recognize that no internal control is 100% foolproof. And you can't have an exception slip through, but if it's five, it's kind of hard to say that's isolated. But I really believe that the issue there was that, the problem was identified. There was a plan in place to have this internal review done. It was timing. Item three has to do with a student financial aid cluster related to matching. This one, it's a little bit of a strange one, and it's because of a change. There is a requirement, I'll say it's on the books, to, for schools to match the Supplemental Opportunity Education Grant amount that the federal government provides, but it was waived. There was a waiver for it. The waiver expired at the end of your fiscal year 2011. There's a pretty comprehensive student financial aid report that is completed called the FIZAP. That's just the initials. We test that a year in arrears, because it's not due in final format till December. So, what we do is we test the one from the previous year. So, this year, as part of our 2013 audit, we test the one from 2012 that was due December 31st of 2012. And when we tested that, there's a place to identify the match that the school has to have for the supplemental grant. And because it was the first year that that match was required to be made, it was missed and wasn't made. I think subsequently it was made, wasn't it? But it wasn't made by the time the FIZAP was filed. So, we have to report that. There's a question cost on it, but meanwhile, it's been corrected since then. I think that because it was the first year, again, the school has put some procedures in place to make sure that that's addressed for subsequent years. And that was $13,112. And then the last finding, you guys aren't going to have me come back again, because
It's kind of depressing.
... of the findings. Well, you know, these, they're not that bad. I mean, if, and I should probably say, I'll go through the fourth finding and then tell you about the results of what this means. Of the 40 students that we looked, we look at testing of reporting that is done from your systems to the clearinghouse that's used to monitor student, students' financial loans, their status for their student financial loans. When students graduate, or they drop, or whatever else, unless they get re-registered within a certain period of time, either another institution or here, they'll go into repayment status on their student loans. There's a grace period. And we've reported this on all the colleges I've worked on for years. It's one of those things where it'll come up one year, then everything will be fine for a couple of years, then there'll be a finding. And the federal government never seemed to care about this when it was Wyoming Student Loan Corp., or First Interstate Bank, or some other lender out there, that instead of having a full six months to contact the student, see if they were going to re-enroll, or if they would go into repayment status. Well, the institutions might only get two months, because by the time things got corrected on this clearinghouse with the right information, it just, it squeezed that six-month period for the lender to follow up with the borrowers. Like I said, the federal government never contacted any of my colleges when they had this finding, until the federal government became responsible for collecting the loans. Now, the federal government thinks it's a big deal if they don't have their full six months. They want to make sure the information is being timely communicated to the clearinghouse, so then, and the federal government doesn't do this. They subcontract it, but nevertheless, their subcontractors complain if they don't get the full six-month period to look at the grace period. So, they're getting more concerned about making sure these things are accurate. I will tell you that you're not the only college I work on that has a finding in this area this year. There are some issues with the software. The software that is used, part of the colleague system, has built-in processes that is supposed to export graduating student lists. And it's supposed to do some other things automatically. And what tends to happen is this software develops glitches where it doesn't do this. Because it's interesting, I'll find another college has the same issue, same software. The colleges that don't have the issue, I'll ask them, I say, "Well, if there was a glitch in the software, why don't you have the same issue when we tested graduating students and found that of our sample, they weren't updated timely, or the date's not right?" And the response I get is, "Well, we manually checked, and we found a problem, so we went back and manually had to do these changes." So, that's the only real advice I can give, is that the institution needs to spot-check the changes. The other thing is, you know, because I don't have enough to do just doing my audit work, I also teach for our affiliation, and when I was teaching in both Chicago and Kentucky this year, I was able to talk to practitioners that work with colleges and universities. And it was interesting, because in sharing notes with them, they've actually told me that there are problems with the clearinghouse itself. The clearinghouse is in the cloud. It's a web-based database to keep track of all the student loan borrowers in terms of their status and registration. And I heard from two different firms that they actually, their clients have screen prints showing, because they would do these spot checks to make sure the information was properly transmitted and updated on the clearinghouse. And they would print the screen when they would do these spot checks, showing, yes, the date's right, and everything's there, and keep it. The auditors would come in and check it, and lo and behold, the graduating student's not shown as graduated. They're shown as still being in school. And the client, their client would have that screen, screen print of that student showing that the clearinghouse had been updated, showed that student was graduated when they pulled it up three weeks before. Now, three weeks later, the clearinghouse has lost that change. So, there are problems with the clearinghouse too. I don't want to make it sound like it's always the school's fault. Nevertheless, I mean, we did find, out of the 40 students, we looked at 28 instances where dates either weren't correct, or status hadn't been updated on the clearinghouse. They've subsequently been corrected, and again, there were some problems with the software this year. The bottom line, I don't know how many minutes I'm in, but I know I'm getting close. In, when we give our opinion, and it's, this is interesting, is with government auditing standards, the one with the internal control and the compliance with laws and regulations, we don't give an opinion. We give what's called a negative opinion. We basically say nothing came to our attention, to indicate you're not compliant with these laws and regulations, or that you have significant internal control issues. And if something does come to our attention, we report it. With the A133 on the federal awards, we actually give an opinion on whether or not in material respects you're in compliance with those federal programs that we test. These items are not significant enough that we have to qualify our opinion. So, they're what we would call reportable, but they do not mean that you are materially out of compliance. So, we, we have three levels, you know, no findings, items that we have to report, but you're not materially out of compliance, and then materially out of compliance. Materially out of compliance is a big deal. You're in the middle. You have some things to work on, but you're not to that point yet. The only other thing, oh, the thing that we are also, we're waiting on is the Corrective Action Plan from the college, which frankly, at this point, is already, the issues have already been corrected. The only part of the Correction Action Plan that we really need is just the procedures that have been put in place to avoid this happening next year. Let's see. I think, oh, last year, we had a finding on return of Title IV, and we just referred this year as it was still in process of being corrected, which is why we have a finding with return to Title IV this year. So, we do have that on the status of prior year findings. Another thing that I will, I didn't distribute it in time this time, so I probably am not supposed to distribute it now, because it wasn't available to the public before. supposed to distribute it now because it wasn't available to the public before. But some of the colleges and college foundations have asked for some comparative information. So what I've done is I have a schedule that I prepared that I'll give to Carol or Harry that they can pass on to you. But I've actually taken the last three years on the income statement and showed what the average dollar size is for the seven community colleges and then shown where LCCC is for each of those years, as well as I've plugged in 2013, because I don't have 2013 for the other colleges. And also, just some benchmark items or some key statistic items, showing like operating revenues per student, both on an FTE count as well as an annualized student count, and how much student financial aid your students have per full-time equivalent compared to what the seven, average of the seven colleges is. So I will provide that. It's just kind of a good snapshot where you can see where you fit with the other seven colleges as an average. You probably already know where that is because you are the largest. Are there any questions? That's kind of the quick view.
Good job.
It was riveting.
A couple of questions here.
Sure.
You were talking about this sample of forty students that you tested for return of Title IV funds. How many students do we have that we return Title IV funds on? I'm wondering how big this population is.
I believe it's three, well, the ones, and I should qualify, it's not, not all of them have a return of Title IV. They're the ones that the calculation has to be done on. And I believe there's somewhere around 378. I don't know why I can think of that number off the top of my head, but 378 sticks in my mind. Because we have two sample methodologies on this. One is if the sample size is over 200 and, over, I take, yeah, if it's over 250, then our default number under our audit methodology is 40. And if it's under 250, then it's 10% is what the federal guideline is and what we're supposed to do for sampling.
So let me ask you this, then. When we're talking about resulted in question costs of a certain amount, was that just a sample? Was that from the sample or was that then projected to the population?
Well, to give you an example of that is, we don't have a question cost on the return of Title IV this year because we didn't have a dollar amount. It was timing, just the timing of when payments were made. Whereas the, we did have the question cost on the matching, but that's 100% of what the match was. What we would do normally is if, for instance, last year when we reported the return of Title IV, and I just happen to have my last year's report with me, we try to report both. What we actually found in terms of dollars, as well as what the projected amount of that would be. And as auditors, we're, people think we're really good at math, but the only math we really use is plus, minus, plus, I mean, multiply and divide. So we do a very simplified projection. We don't do a statistically valid projection with.
In fact, you guys don't even use minus. You just use like parentheses or something. It's really weird.
Yes, we try to do that. So what we try to do is, like last year, we reported the, the overpayment was actually $2,295 and an underpayment of $253 on return of Title IV. But we said projected overpayment would have been $17,303 and a projected underpayment of $1910. $10,000 is the number the feds tell us if the projected, or what they call it, the likely error amount, is over $10,000, then auditors, you have to report it as a quantitatively material finding. Doesn't mean you're materially misstate on the program. They're just saying that's quantitatively material for a reporting standard. If it's under that, then we don't. We did have one finding that we found in the ETSS program, and I, I'm only mentioning this to let you know that we do actually consider the materiality. And the reason we didn't report it was because we looked at it from a materiality perspective and the projected error was something like less than $800. So we didn't report it. And it had to do with an overtime calculation on a student employee in that area or something like that. It was minor. And so as an auditor, I can make that determination. It wasn't quantitatively significant, it wasn't qualitatively significant, so we didn't report it. But that's what we do, is provide both the known dollars we find, and then if it's something that was part of a sample error, then we project it.
Yeah. You know, all of these things that you're talking about here look like they're pretty much ordinary programs that we run year after year. But I had an issue and one other trustee had an issue with programs that were more extraordinary and seemed to almost be one time. And maybe it was undoubtedly federal money involved in it, and I guess maybe it falls under federal programs. But I was specifically concerned that we didn't have controls in place that might prevent things like double dipping and so forth, people being paid twice. And I don't know if you looked into this or not.
We did look into it on the specific one you found, and it was kind of interesting. What we found was that, our first concern was, were employees here at the college getting paid by the federal government directly as well as being paid through the program by the college? And what we found was, we were able to see the federal funds did come directly into the program. But the other thing we found was that the people involved in this program were given, you have a term for it, supplemental pay? Supplemental pay or stipends in addition to their regular pay? And there wasn't anything wrong with that into the internal controls of the college because it was approved. But when the director of that program changed, the new director came in and said, mm, I don't feel this is the right answer and we're not going to do these stipends anymore. So I think it was a legitimate concern to raise. I couldn't say that it was wrong or that there was double dipping. But I guess the issue is that there are times when there's a program that a person who's involved in that program is paid supplemental pay, not necessarily because they're doing additional work, but because there's additional funds to give them supplemental pay. And that's a little bit on the gray. It's a little bit squishy. I don't feel real comfortable with it. I can't say it's wrong, but I don't like that because the rationale should be that if, if an instructor has to go beyond the normal call of what they're doing, then maybe you do have a stipend or supplemental pay. But if the director of a program says, well, I have this money available, I'll go ahead and give them a stipend. It's like, really should be based on, on the work they're doing. So anyway, that was subsequently changed. So they didn't double dip by getting paid by two different parties for the same work, but they did get supplemental pay, even though they were doing the work that was within the scope of what the original scope was for the work that they were doing, the instruction they were doing. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
And I'm glad you brought it to our attention because these are the kinds of things we want to check on because sometimes as trustees, people will come up and tell you things they won't tell us because we come in in our suits and we're intimidating and nobody here wants to talk to us without the attorney with them. And there are times that they'll share things with you, and when we hear those things, which is why we meet with you beforehand, we can go and we can check on those things. And the other thing that you raised, which was really good, because sometimes with federal programs, even when they go on year after year, it's easy to sometimes get caught up in some of the, the real detailed rules. But every once in a while, somebody asks a question and says, you know, is that program really supposed to be used for that broad, a federal program used for that broad of a purpose? And it's a good question. And you asked a good question about GEAR Up, and I had to go into the original legislation, things like that to get an answer. I got an answer. I was a little bit surprised by the answer. The question was basically, is GEAR Up supposed to be focusing its efforts on reaching out to high school students to bring them into the college setting to pursue an academic-type career, for instance, finishing an associate's degree or moving on to get a bachelor's degree? I think it's a really good question. And the issue was raised because there has been some outreach that's been more focused on bringing people here to pursue technical programs as opposed to academic programs. Well, finally, I got into it, and really, the GEAR Up program, they're just trying to get kids to get, you know, especially at-risk kids, ones who are first-generation college students, just to get them into the campus environment. I think that the hope is that a lot of, most of them will consider pursuing maybe a more academic road. But under the GEAR Up program, they're just trying to break that barrier that a lot of these kids have of thinking, I don't belong on a college campus. My, my parents never did anything like that. I don't have an interest in, you know, math and English and that kind of stuff in high school. I like auto shop. And the idea is to convince them, no, get into the college environment. One of two things, either they'll get some additional training, which is good anyway. But second, maybe if they just see that, once they get there, it's not so intimidating and say, you know what, I could pursue something more than, than just what I was thinking of. I could actually go on and get a bachelor's degree. I could move on and, and get into academia or something like that, even though nobody in my family's ever done that before. But nevertheless, the program itself, they just said, well, with the GEAR Up program, we're just trying to get them in the door. There are other programs that are focused on trying to get students, especially first-generation students, to move more into the academic areas that their peer pressure and environment does not push. Again, you know, very good question because sometimes I think we, as auditors, sometimes we even forget to look at the big picture on some of these major programs. We're looking at all the minutia and the specific rules, too. So both of them were good questions. We followed up with them. Although there weren't any things, any things that we had to report, I think it's still, it's a good discussion item, and then people out there say, man, these auditors do look at stuff like this. I better be really clean in what I do.
Yeah, well, thanks very much for looking into those things. And I learned something because I thought GEAR Up was more narrowly focused than it, than it turns out it is.
Yeah. The TRIO programs are much more narrowly focused, and there's some others that are much more narrowly focused, but it's good to know.
Good to know. Any other questions? Thank you, Wayne.
Oh, I think.
Two real quick.
Sure.
In general of it, help me with the SEOG match and the difference there. And like you too, Judy, we lost our Title III eligibility, which is basically determined on two factors. One is the percent of eligible students and needed students and things like that. We lost that. When we had Title III eligibility, we were able to waive our match for federal work studies for SEOG. Is that correct? That was really the trigger is when our student population shifted, we lost that, that Title III eligibility, which means that we had to put in the SEOG match. The match money that we, the money we set aside for SEOG scholarships, my understanding that that was still on the books and was still considered a match, and we've carried that. Is that not the case? We've carried a line item under our scholarship that comes for SEOG, and I believe it was more than, what was the finding, 13,000?
13,000.
And that, that is not what we've used historically to match it? Or is that a different match associated with the program implementation?
We have that line on there, and Carol or Harry, correct me, but I don't think we had it funded last year.
I'll have to look at which one you're talking about because there is, under the scholarship department, if you will, there's a line for SEOG, but that's the actual match that we moved and have done it. So it's not, it's not monies that is waiting to be used, it's what we've already recorded and used. So there may be a different line item that you're thinking of that I, I'd be looking at. So maybe I got something.
We can take a look at that. It's just something that came up.
And this is a draft. I mean, if we're wrong, and we're, we're looking at the FIZAP where it shows the amount that was paid. If we're wrong, I, I don't want to keep a finding in there that's wrong.
Sure. We'll take a look at it. And I mean, I'm probably missing it here, but I remember looking at it as we've done an analysis of our scholarship dollars in the previous years. And we have matching funds associated both, I believe, both with SEOG at GEAR Up and TRIO in our scholarship line item. And the intent, the justification for those scholarships was to match the federal grants. And I know we've had that even in the years where we had Title III eligibility, but, but I don't know, we can look at it.
We'll look at it because we did, we did make the match. It was just in the year afterwards and when we reported it on the FIZAP, it was wrong on the FIZAP. So, but we did make the match.
Great.
But we can look at that.
Okay, thanks, Eric. The other question I have then is in regards to the clearinghouse. I mean, just for my clarification and for others, my understanding is that, that participation of student information or students in the clearinghouse is still voluntary? Is it not voluntary for those folks that take federal direct loans? And that's what it's there? It's a question about tracking those data, and if the students can opt out of participation, there may be something inherently problematic with that reporting.
You know, and nothing I've ever heard in a student financial aid workshop, and again, whereas auditors, we only get a narrow focus, has ever indicated it was voluntary or they could opt out. My understanding is if, if they participate in the, in the federal loan program with subsidized interest, that it is required to be reported, otherwise the federal government doesn't know when to stop subsidizing the interest. But I could be wrong on that, too, but the testing we've done for the last 12, 13 years has always been, and the, and the direction we have from the Department of that is, you'll go in and you'll test this as auditors. This is what you'll do.
Sure. And it may be that it's voluntary for those individuals to not receive any type of federal support or financial aid support.
Could be. And unsubsidized loans, I don't think there's a requirement.
Sure, sure. Okay, good question. And then just, just for the board members, you know, for, you know, because I hear these things and then I, my sort of people brain has to navigate those things. Much of what, what Wayne is sharing with you, we're well aware of. And, you know, it's just, as you said, in some cases, timing. I can tell you what the total liability was for the return of Title IV funds because we actually had that numbered. It was like, what, 10 or 13,000? Do I have that?
No, it's not 13,000.
13,000. So that's really what it is for the entire population. We've corrected that, submitted the FIZAP. I mean, it's just the timing in which it took us to go through and not only correctly do the calculations, but in many ways, clean up the way we approach all of these things just took time in working through the auditors, you know? And had we been able to start a few months earlier, maybe we would have been able to hit the timing.
On that report, though, there's a pretty significant amount of what were overpayments that the college paid in excess of what they needed to in refunds. So I think that's part of the issue with the feds is saying, we don't want to pay you the 13,000 because frankly, you know, we paid you more than that, that we didn't have to pay you, you know, significantly more, so.
But I just wanted to share that I think we are well on our way to having those issues and many of the other ones sort of firmed up. And the way we approach these things this year was, I know, a struggle for student service of financial aid as they went in and really, really overhauled the way they did things. But, but I know it'll be much better into the future, and so we're, we're.
And step a little bit out of character as an auditor and say something positive. A lot of the problems with return of Title IV traditionally have been working with the faculty to determine for these students that don't officially withdraw, what's their last date of attendance? We used to have findings on that area all the time. We didn't have that issue here. You've got a good system in place for identifying when the students actually drop. So, and that's one of the harder things, really, in that process, to get that identified. So there's a lot of positive things in this, too. I think it's just a matter with some turnover and some things like that, is just being able to pull it together. And the good news is, is there's not a lot of dollars here.
But.
Madam Chair, in reading through the audit a little bit, Wayne had made a comment, at least, I thought it was a comment where the college has no formal investment policy, but yet you didn't comment on whether or not that was good or bad.
The college itself invests very conservatively CDs. Frankly, this is my opinion, and I, I've actually had some legislators agree with me on this. When the state established the matching program for scholarships, the way the legislation was worded was, when the match is made, it has to be made to the college because the state, under state constitution, can't give the money to a nonprofit, can't make contributions. But in the statute, they said, we're going to give the money to the college. The college is to immediately turn it over to the foundation to be invested by the foundation because foundations are frankly set up to invest what I would call it a balanced approach. If you took the state match and put it into CDs, you wouldn't be giving any scholarships from the earnings because there wouldn't be any earnings. And so I don't think it's a bad thing that you don't have a, an investment policy that addresses much more than doing CDs. It's just a formal investment policy that says, we'll have this much, this percentage in equities and this much in debt securities that are not government guaranteed. That's more of the foundation side of it. You actually do have an investment policy the state established. You invest in government securities and CDs that are secured or covered by FDIC insurance.
Any other questions? Thanks a lot, Wayne.
Thank you.
Good, always good to see you.
Thanks.
I am next with the board self-evaluation. I did contact Marty Sizik, again, who I think has done very good service for us here at the college. She said the board self-evaluation this year would be $995 plus the cost of report generation. Last year, we wanted three different reports, comments, favorable, unfavorable, frequency distribution, and the total cost of these is $45. She also says that her notes indicate that two questions should be rewarded, and I think that was something that Ed had asked about. So that a favorable response equals always on the Likert scale. I don't know what that is. Also, there was talk about bylaws being fixed, and I think that we have now done that with our shared government. So I don't think that we should discuss that again. What did you, do you have something to say about that, Joe?
Oh, Madam Chair, you, you've gone through and actually established governance and Board of Trustees policies. Those in, in conjunction really with state statute would form your, your bylaws, so I don't know that you need to address that.
Right. Okay. That's what I thought. And then if we have questions that the Board of Trustees are inclined to answer as not applicable, we will want to remove those. So it doesn't make any sense to have those in there. And you do have an option of replacing them with new questions, which would change the survey a little bit. Questions answered, not applicable, do not add value to the instrument and our preference is to avoid them. So the other, the only other thing that we could do here to change this, if, if we so choose, is to do a, a real three sixty, which I think Marty's advised us to do every year that we've done this survey. And that would mean that we not only evaluate ourselves, but the college gets to evaluate this as well. We will have, we, I think we will be doing a college survey or a morale survey soon, or we could, we could do this one, but I think the college wants to do the morale survey. So I'm not sure that it would behoove us to change this instrument, but I would like your input, please.
Madam Chair.
Trustee.
This, this brings me to an issue with the three sixty survey of Joe as well. How do we choose what individuals get to engage in the three sixty survey? Is it some sort of a random sample? If it's not a random sample, I'm very worried that there would be, you know, there would be bias involved in these things that would involve highly interested individuals getting themselves on, on the three sixty survey and that, and that would be true for Joe, too. So I'm, I'm unsure what to, what to say about that issue. I just want to know how, how would they be chosen?
I'll ask Marty that question.
Madam Chair, I can, you know, Alfred, there are a couple ways. One of the ways that, that folks recommend is you truly do a random sample. The folks that, that disagree with that or put qualifiers on that is, is you have to randomly select from a population that would be able to make a known and intelligent comment. So, you know, a random sample, entire population, for example, if, if they have no interaction or awareness of what you do as trustees would be ill-equipped to provide you a feedback. And so some folks suggest that you look at a population based on those that would have relevance or a connection or an understanding of what you would be evaluated on and then you would randomly choose from, from that population. And I would imagine Marty could help facilitate that process.
I think she could.
It's called a stratified random sample.
And as a segue, or a connection, I should say, we are preparing to do the campus leading and communicating survey, or, oh, I think you guys have referred to it as the morale survey, and, and getting that off the ground. And that's really the approach we will take as a stratified random sample. It's not stratified by individuals who have, you know, everybody here has the ability to do it. It's stratified across population and groups, so employee groups and all of those things to truly randomly select from the population. And so that's the methodology we'll use for the leading and communicating survey.
Madam Chair.
Perfect.
Would someone define three sixty survey or whatever it means?
Madam Chair, Don, it's essentially incorporating multiple inputs, if you will, of, of feedback from different perspectives. So in, in employee evaluation, it typically would include, you would have an evaluation that would include self-evaluation, supervisor evaluation, and then three sixty feedback, which would mean from all directions in which an individual has influence or relationship. So in my case, that would be from faculty, staff, students on campus, as well as the other perspective, perhaps legislators, community college commission, staff, those types of things. So the idea is to actually get feedback. Now, one key differentiator, though, is that, and these words are sometimes misconstrued, three sixty evaluation versus three sixty feedback. I don't condone necessarily a three sixty evaluation because that would assume that everybody has a role in evaluating your performance. The feedback is three sixty feedback for the people who have the authority to do the evaluation and to inform them when they may have limited perspective from certain angles. And, and, you know, that's what I think I would support, certainly for my evaluation, but, but even for yours. It's a, it's an intent for you to gain feedback and you essentially evaluate yourselves as a board.
And this would, I believe, be the third year that we have done this survey and, and I think that it's valuable for us to do it and see how we're doing. So if we want to go ahead with this, which I would recommend that we do, I would like to do it in the month of November and go ahead and hire, would you like to look this over?
No.
Okay.
I'm familiar with it.
Yes, okay. And so I would recommend that we do it in November before Thanksgiving and get it done. And, and she gets it out and she gives us plenty of time to answer the survey and if, is anyone traveling in November? I mean, for a lengthy period of time?
Madam Chair, just around Thanksgiving, the week of Thanksgiving.
But before that, you would be available. Okay. Well, I think I'll, I'll talk to her. If I have any new information, I will have Vicki send it out to you, if that's okay, Vicki. And then I'll give you some time to comment about it if we're going to change, like if Ed has any question changes or if you think of anything between now and the end of the week, just contact me and I'll, I'll give that information to Marty and, and then we'll go from there.
Madam Chair, I, I like the idea of kind of a stratified three sixty in the evaluation of the board, which I think is different than the morale survey. But I would like to know from the folks who are in this room and maybe from student government or whatever that comes here.
Okay.
How they feel we are leading them rather than just us evaluating ourselves. I would like that. I think that's a little bit different than the morale survey.
I think it is, too. Because we, we are asking them to evaluate us as a board and, and leadership on the campus.
Right.
So I think that's a good suggestion, Brenda. And I'll talk to Marty about that. Now, say the people in this room, would we include, Joe, you might have the answer to this, would we include all the people that come to, like, your cabinet and faculty that most of us know?
Madam Chair, I don't know that I have an answer to that. I would actually probably pose that question to Marty and ask her to develop the, the methodology or the approach to-
Okay.
-choosing the population.
That's good.
And then if she needs additional information to help inform that, I'd be happy to work with her. Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, I think we'll move ahead with this. I think it'll cost us more money, but I think it would be worth it. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have our January retreat date. I think it was sent out, some suggestions about when we could not meet and I looked at my calendar and I thought that the best time for us possibly to have a retreat would be the week of January twentieth. And I didn't know if we, last time we did an all-day retreat, we did it on a, was it a Friday or Saturday? I think it might have been a Friday.
I think that's right.
Right.
It was limited, it was like three or four hours, I don't remember.
It certainly felt like all day.
It was a half day.
I would be happy to go back to you.
No, I know, I'm kidding you. And we were going to do it in Laramie, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if, if folks understand, are aware, I don't, I don't know, I'll just hope they're not being redundant, but one of the ideas or the sort of the proposals we've had was try to kill three or four or five birds with one stone. We, and I know you have an interest in meeting with the advisory board. We have been working to try to get a, a moment for you to sit down with the new president of UW. We have a, a final Level One for the, the joint UW Albany County campus building on the, the UW campus. And what, what we thought was if we were to actually set aside a day or three quarters of a day and to do your retreat in Laramie, we could have you connect with the advisory board and meet Dr. Sternberg, hear a presentation on the Level One, which I will come back to you with recommendation to accept that study as we move to the next phase, hopefully. And it just seemed that'd be a nice, nice way to do all that in Laramie and through a retreat in January.
Right. Because I think part of our retreat last time was educational and so this would fit right in. Ed?
Just to follow up on that Level One, is that considered to be our Level One or UW's Level One?
It's a good question. I, I don't know that, that in this case, I don't know if anybody owns a Level One or how that works. It is required, I, I would say probably for formal sake, since it's required as part of the planning process with the state, it's probably UW's Level One because they are the ones that requested eight hundred thousand dollars for a Level Two planning and will ultimately be requesting money for the, the construction. But there's certainly an interest in the Joint Planning Committee and there was a town Buchanan at the time, as there is for me, that, that both boards commit to it and both boards are aware of it and both boards continue to be engaged in that process. But I guess formally, it's probably theirs.
Okay.
January twentieth, is that a holiday?
Well, I'm not thinking of that day. I'm just thinking of that week.
Oh, that week, I'm sorry.
I'm thinking of the twenty-fourth. I think Friday would be the twenty-fourth, so if you can look at your calendars and see if that's a good day.
Sometime that week.
Sometime that week and I think people prefer not to do it on a weekend. So if that's all the discussion about that retreat, I had asked Joe if he could just give us a little feedback on the community college white paper that he developed. I may, no, it's not that correct.
Yeah, Madam Chair, really just open up the conversation and have questions. I shared with you a, a white paper on performance-based funding that, that I can't take credit for and hopefully I won't have to take blame for it or responsibility for it down the road. But it was a, a paper that was to help us facilitate a conversation with the commission at their upcoming commission meeting about performance-based funding and approach if we're going to go down that road. And so I, I know I had mentioned that to you at some of my previous presidents' reports that, you know, I just wanted to play a more active role in helping to facilitate that conversation. And we put together that white paper. I believe all the presidents are committed to it. Dr. Rose supports it and I think we have a unified voice as a commission in regards to the, if we're going to go down this road of performance-based funding. Here's what we know and here's what, you know, we believe the recommendations would be for facilitating the development of that model. So I share it with you just to keep you in tune. I know some of you, Ed, I know, has been involved with these conversations as part of the Wyoming Association of Community College Trustees, but, you know, if there are questions that I could answer for you, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
I thoroughly enjoyed the, the white paper update. I really did because whether Wyoming goes alone, its own system, or adopts something from other places, it's going to have to happen. I, I really believe from the, the past week, being in the Seattle area and going to that conference of the Association of Community College Trustees, that it's, it's, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. Performance funding is, is going to affect federal funding through the various grants. They're going to be looking at, as I understand it, the Higher Education Act that's coming down the line is going to have a lot of that type of language. So I think that you're right on, right on being with what you put out for us.
Ed?
One of the things that in our discussions with others that I've encountered and it concerns me about the model you've actually addressed, or I should say, were addressed on page six and, page three, I guess, of your draft. And I found it something that I think we have to be careful about as we move forward, especially as we think about in the state of Wyoming, we consider the community college system, but in a way, we're not a system because part of the discussion out there, and you alluded or directly stated some, some comments about this, is a lot of these systems are designed to be competitive. So you either have a system which is working together, driven to try to assist and benefit all parts, or you begin to look at competition as a way to drive and, and one-upmanship, if you would. And it concerns me that when you then pay for performance, do you look at a set dollar amount, sum zero, let's say a million dollars, and parties then gain additional monies because of their performance? What if all parties are eligible for a significant amount of money? Let's say only one college was eligible for the million dollars the first year, but the next year, you still put a million dollars in there and five of the colleges are eligible. Have you put, have, have the legislators put five million dollars there to support that? Because if not, for the same kind of activity, now you're paying twenty percent of what you paid before. So I, I think we have to be very careful of the kind of traps that you can get into with performance funding. I, I don't have any problem with pursuing pay for performance, but it's very critical that we understand what that performance, what your baseline expectation is. And then the next step you have to say to me is, what is it you expect to achieve and what are you going to pay? In our case, we're looking to move forty percent of the funding, which is about eighteen million dollars. Is that right?
I think it's closer to eighty or ninety million.
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm thinking of what we needed to make.
Right, yeah.
So if you're looking at eighty million dollars there, yeah, this is not small amounts of money relative to the effects on our programs and our ability to serve our students. So I'm not sitting here disagreeing with you in the fact that we need to be looking at performance funding and finding a way. We have been, I mean, we're already there to some degree. But I would hope that we really give consideration to how are you going to fund your expectations, making sure the expectations are identified and that you fund them appropriately. Otherwise, you're going to get a lot of unintended consequences, I think. And one of those was alluded to here by you in the white paper that's always concerned me. Great inflation, weakening of academic standards, restrictions on access, which I think is a critical one we have to think about. Restrictions on access and equity and student admissions and enrollment. And there are others indicated here, but that's concerns I have and I, I hope we will continue to discuss and look for ways to pursue this in a positive manner. They're very good things.
I think trustee Moja brings up great points and I share what you're saying. My comments were not to say, "Hey, we've got to go forward with the performance funding come hell or high waters." One of the points I think that Dr. Schaefer pointed out is that we've got to be careful that we don't punish those colleges that are not achieving. And that's a, that's a challenge unto itself. How do you maintain a base for the colleges that they don't go under as a result of not competing well with other colleges? So yes, there's a lot of consequences that need to be considered and you brought them up there. I agree with you.
One of the things that I was glad to see showed up in here because during the legislative task force hearings that was Hank Cho and others, we beat the drum to death, was this whole harmless clause that we used to have in our funding so that if you had a college which had some difficulty and we weren't really talking about performance so much, then it was, unless you consider enrollment, to be the answer to that. It was that, you know, those fixed costs, there's a certain foundation that you must have there and, boy, those legislators and others on that task force were not happy with that concept of hold harmless. They, they didn't like that in there at all.
Well, thank you, Wayne. Anyone else?
You mean other business-type stuff?
Would you have any other business? And I think we'll make our report at the next meeting.
Well, thank you. I was hoping you weren't going to suggest that we talk about our report from the ACCT Conference because all of my memory is written on paper right now and I don't have it all available, so. But I would like to request that we have it listed on the agenda.
It will be.
Okay. And I, I'm wondering if there would be another frequent report that we could get from the Wyoming Association of Community Colleges. Because just listening here, between the conversation that you're sharing with Dr. Joe, there are things that are happening here in the state that would be good to be on top of. Fortunately, we're going to be going to the summit and that summit's going to give us a, a lot of information, but after that, I think it'd be good to have periodic reports of, of what's happening. I know you, you'd share some things, but I think maybe formalize it just a little bit more, if that's possible.
Do you want to formalize it through a trustee or do you want Joe to give? How do, how would you like that to happen?
I leave that up for you folks to figure out how to do best.
I, I'd just recommend a combination.
Okay.
Often times, it's been Joe will provide some additional or provide and I'll, or bring it.
Yeah, maybe what we'll do is just add a, a WACC T update underneath the board updates and we can kick it off and if I have information to share, I'm certainly willing to do that. And, and don't forget, you know, we've had Steve Bamer come, the executive director, come to your meetings in the past and he's here locally and I know he's more than receptive of it and perhaps after the summit, we want to invite him back and, you know, he could certainly share that information or just, you know, let me know if you want me to invite him every six months or so and have him come and do those updates as well. But we'll put something on the agenda if it's okay.
Might like, I, I think it'd be ended up, and I liked your idea of maybe inviting him after the summit and have him back. How many folks are planning on attending?
I think everyone but Christine and Kevin are going.
Are you talking about on the seventeenth?
Yes.
Yes. The commission- Yes. The commission meetings on the 18th. No.
17th.
Commission is on the 18th.
Yeah, commission's on the 18th, KCC, the summit's on the 17th.
But I think most of us are going to be there on the 17th, because we have our scholarship luncheon.
We have conflict on the 18th.
Would you recommend that we go back the morning of the 18th? Would it be valuable for us?
Well, I, I think it'll be an interesting conversation. My worry is that they won't get to the conversation on performance funding and the complete college-warming stuff until closer to noon, and I'll have to be over. So, you know, if you can make it work, I think that would be great. But knowing the schedules and the travel, I, I think the value probably be on the 17th will be most of the value of the summit.
Okay, because most of us are going to the luncheon, the scholarship luncheon, I believe.
I intend to try to go with them, if you want to, anybody wants to. I'm going to go back over the morning and then come back to the luncheon.
Okay.
Hoping that they will get to some of that. It may be a.
Okay. Well, we're going to try to carpool, and I know that's not part of our trustee discussion here, but, so if we're, if we're finished, I want to remind everyone that, yes?
Well, we're not entirely finished.
Okay.
I don't want to lengthen the meeting any, but we had some discussion, I don't even remember how long ago now, about whether we were going to go to two meetings a month where we could actually vote. And that, that discussion has fallen completely flat. We've never, we've never done anything about it. So could we put that as a discussion?
Sure.
On a, on a meeting soon. And let's just finish that discussion.
Okay, you're talking about changing the, the agenda.
Of, of the way we operate.
So we could do a study and a business session at each meeting?
Yes, we could.
Madam Chair, yes, you could schedule meetings twice a month, and we could just call them board meetings, in which you could do both business and
Yes.
Study and discussion.
Information.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll have a discussion about that at our next study session?
But that's fine.
We'll put it on at your business meeting here in two weeks.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken, for reminding us. Okay, anything else? What I would like to say is that we are having an open house here at the college at the student service area tomorrow evening for the public to come and talk about building forward. And if all of the trustees could be present at some time during the evening, that would be wonderful.
You, you raised, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
An issue that has come up here just recently with me, and I've just been back for a day, and it is, people don't know where the student service area is.
Exactly.
I mean, there needs to be a little bit better description.
Campus signage.
Can you help?
That's the point.
We did talk about that on the way back from the welding section tonight.
I know. Excuse me, but I, I, I said, how am I going to explain this? I mean, you don't come in from that side, you don't come in from this side. Kind of come in, oh, you know where the cafeteria is.
The blue arches to the left.
The blue, well, I said the cafeteria, I said, well, I just, well, that kind of helped, but then, okay, they get in the building, then where do they go? See?
You, you have discovered firsthand the, the issues we deal with.
Why we need to build forward. Exactly. So if we have ended our discussion, I will adjourn this meeting.
I would just like to urge people to come to the concert Sunday at St. Mary's.
Oh, yes, indeed.
It's going to be fantastic. Choir, brass, and the organ.
Wow.
And I didn't realize.
Guest organist.